All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. This is the Addison Central School District Board Meeting of November 6, 2017. And we'll begin with a round of introductions of board members and staff. Begin with you, if you don't mind Suzanne.
Suzanne.
Jen Newsiter.
Karen Henson.
Chris Eaton.
Lorraine Morse.
Ruth Hardy.
Peter Rose, Superintendent.
Peter Conlin.
Chip Malcolm.
Jason Duquette Hoffman.
Steve Orzak.
Nick Colston.
Mary Gill.
Maria Jettie.
Josh Plin, Business Manager.
Vicki Wells, Assistant Assistant Student Services.
And I apologize to those of you who we have our backs to. Are there any, is anybody here from the public to comment on anything that's not a agenda item? No, we have a great turnout. Great to see you guys. All right, well, let's get some business done here before we hear what the presentation is from the middle school students. So how about the recommendation to approve the minutes of October 16, 2017?
Small move.
Thank you, sir. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any changes, additions, subtractions that people would like to make?
We were talking, apparently there's some sort of overriding of the attendance. So because I didn't RSVP, I got tagged as not being here.
Goes on your permanent record.
I see that. I do take the student's name, but there is an overriding process that changes things.
All those in favor of approving the minutes from October 16, please say aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining?
Abstaining.
I'm abstaining.
We have abstained and abstaining.
And Lorraine as well.
Lorraine.
So Ruth, Lorraine, and Jason. Finance Committee, you have a presentation of bills for us?
Ruth, do you have the number?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was trying to get into Board Pack. I do have the numbers, thanks Nick. So bills, from October 23rd, $264,845.50. Those were read by Chip and Nick. And today, on November 6th, $338,533.66. Those were Nick and Victoria. There were no bills last week. We skipped a week. So I'm passing this down to you Suzanne.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve those?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor of approving the bills, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? And we've adopted the bills. All right, we are now going to hear from our...
We're going to turn it over to the middle school?
Yes.
Welcome to the middle school. We're glad that you all join us here tonight. And as we got ready for this presentation, it struck me that when I sit at board meetings, we never or rarely hear from kids. And that really, if you want to learn about the middle school, I can talk about the middle school all day long, but that's not who you should hear from. And so in the back of the room, we have a very large group of incredible middle school students who have been supported by Jan Fraga and Amy Pfefferam on the Pride Panel. And I'd ask them to come to the front of the room because they will be presenting tonight. Ready?
Yeah. I'm Elizabeth Crawford. I'm in 7th grade, and I am from Middlebury.
I'm Owen Lawton. I am 7th grade, and I'm also from Middlebury.
I'm Nargis Anzali. I'm in 7th grade, and I'm from Lurwitch.
I'm Sloska Gwardon Tnelli. I'm in 8th grade, and I'm from Middlebury.
I'm Anya Hardy Mattel. I'm in 8th grade, and I'm from East Middlebury.
I'm Julia Bartlett. I'm from Cornwall, and I'm in 8th grade.
I'm Thomas Wilkinski. I'm in 8th grade, and I'm from Middlebury.
I'm Naomi Brayden. I'm in 7th grade, and I'm from Middlebury.
I'm Heather Delarue. I'm in 7th grade, and I'm from Middlebury.
The Pride Panel is a group of students who take pride behavior. It is a happy position in which students meet regularly to help plan assemblies, coordinate fundraisers, and aid in a number of ways. Pride stands for positive attitude, respect, integrity, dynamic behavior, and empathy. So far, as a Pride group, we decided to donate money to the hurricane relief for the recent hurricanes. We raised, as a school, $1,150. And we have started giving food for food drive.
Okay, so here at Mums, we have four teams. We have two 7th grade teams, the Phoenix Team and the Ohana Team. And we have two 8th grade teams, Paragon and Mosaic. So the teachers for the Paragon Team are Pam Quinn, the team leader and math teacher, Gareth Porizo, English teacher, Brian Lisco, Social Studies, and Amy McCarthy, Science. For Mosaic, we have Jan Broderston, the team leader and math teacher, Dana Corre, English, George Koholvik, Social Studies, and Katie Mulquen, Science. For the Phoenix Team, we have Eileen Sears, the team leader and English teacher, Allison McNamara, math teacher, Darcy Nino, Social Studies, and Sherry Lawson, Science. Lastly, we have the Ohana Team, with Paul Sharrier, the team leader and math teacher, Martha Santa Maria, English, Sarah Neto, Social Studies, and Janelle Parascu, Science. One thing I like about being on a team is being able to compete in team competitions against other teams.
So these are students arriving by bus, so every morning and every afternoon, buses pick us up and drop us off. So there are four core classes in the middle school, English, Math, Science, and Social Studies. And so my favorites are probably English and Social Studies because I enjoy learning about history and literature. And also, all of the teams and all of the teachers really make it fun for us to learn about these things because all of the core classes can be really boring, but the teachers like really engage us and they make it learning like a new, good thing for students.
We have four SPAR classes which alternate each quarter, which are Art, Computer Tech, Health, and STEM. I just finished Computer Tech where we learned about fake news, how to identify it and how to avoid it by playing games and making websites.
There are different electives at Mums, too. We have Band, Choir, French, Spanish, and Math enrichment. They're optional electives, so you can choose which ones you want to do. I do Band, Choir, French, and Math enrichment. So I think they're really great because they allow you to choose based on your interests. And Band and Choir are just really fun to make music with your classmates. And I think that the French program is really great. And it's really interesting to learn about another language and how to use it and their culture. And in Math enrichment, you learn about topics that you don't really discuss in just normal core math. So I think that the electives are really great. Even though when you take them, it adds a lot to your schedule, I think it's worth it. This is just a picture of the hallways before school. And so the sports at Mums, in the fall, there's cross-country running, soccer, and field hockey. And out of those, I do soccer. And in winter, there's cross-country running, basketball, gymnastics, and wrestling. And in the spring, there's lacrosse, track and field, softball, and baseball. And I do lacrosse. And I love staying after school to do sports. And I feel like they're a great way to hang out with your friends and be on a team and learn like team building and working hard. So here's some pictures of cross-country, and soccer, and field hockey from this fall. So after-school activities at Mums are basically extracurricular activities where students can just pursue their interests and learn about things after school. So extracurricular activities are math camps, creative writing, GOV, memory book, tag corn dough, tagger TV, garage band, stop-motion video, pop-up activities, art club, makers' club, tennis club, and other teams. So this is the gym before school. And this is a picture of choir singing at concert last year. And so the Pride Cup Challenge, which is what the Pride Panel does a lot of organizing for. So each of our four teams at Mums, they compete in a monthly challenge. And the challenges are activities that show pride. And so like ones that we've been doing are raising money for charities, and demonstrating academic excellence, and also team building in all of them. And points are awarded for each activity. And the team with the most points is awarded the Pride Cup at the end of the school year. And so my team, Paragon, won it last year. And so this is a picture of recess at lunch. And then the all-school events at Mums include assemblies, dances, I love to reweek, New York City trip, Greenup Day, and all of the Pride Cup Challenges that everyone in our school does a lot of. Okay, so this is our cafeteria at lunch. So social times of the day are often like the only times of the day we get to see our friends. So before school starts, generally before the TA bell rings, which is at 8:23. And so before that, a lot of students will be talking in the hallways. So you'll see groups of friends walking along the hallways. You can also go into the cafeteria and then the gym. A lot of people do that between classes. If students have classes together, they can walk to their next classes. And some students chat during that period. Lunch is a really great time to see your friends because if you have lunch with your friends, you can sit together and talk together. And then lunch recess where outside is available. So people play soccer and basketball and foursquare outside. And then after-school, which is all the clubs and activities that you and your friends can do together to see each other more often.
So there are many things that we like about Mums here, a few that we've thought of. One of them is the teachers really pay attention to everyone's needs, and they try to help someone if they're falling behind. Another one I like is how they recognize the good behavior of others. Another one is because it's a relatively small school, the students really become a community and they get to know each other very well. Another one is with middle school, you get a sense of independence that you don't experience at all at elementary school. You get to know the people from other schools and communities. By 8th grade, you really have a sense of family and your team. At Mums, you have more of an opportunity to challenge yourself and to make your own decisions. Another thing I like is I like the smaller size of the classes and the fact that most of the teachers are understanding. I love the Mums community and how nice they are. And I like the setup of the classes and how the middle of the day is set up. I like how we have lots of school events like Pride Cup Challenges and that we have to, we have all the sports and clubs that we do. I also like that Mums is super organized. The core PE, Math enrichment, and SPAR systems work very well, I think. I like that our SPARs change each quarter because we still have the same teachers for our core classes, and we get a variety of different classes. Also, I like that we don't have a choice at lunch. We do have a choice at lunch, to have recess or go to the library.
Okay, so one thing we think we could do better at Mums is too much homework or it is off toward me between teachers. Another thing is we should include the 6th graders from the elementary schools in the district. We would like more time to see our friends. Also, we need more... Be late to your class. We need more students to join, be motivated to join activities. We would like to look at our TA time, we would like to look at our TA time and add more time and mix them up some. Like switch TAs sometimes, or like get new kids to go to different TAs.
You with the same TAs for both years?
Yes. So we'd like to like maybe switch them up a little bit.
Other questions from the board?
I had one right away, oh, I'm sorry.
How much time do you have between classes?
Three minutes. Three minutes. I don't know enough time to get like between classes and go to your locker and go to your bathroom.
Especially if you're walking some stairs and you have classes downstairs.
And then like sometimes like teachers, you'll be like, hey, I have to go to the bathroom. The teacher will be like, why did you go between classes? And you're like, I don't feel like I have time between classes. And then go downstairs, downstairs.
So you're not always on the phone when you guys are going back and forth?
Yeah.
How do you fit in all the extracurriculars? Anya, you mentioned during 4. And how do you fit those in during the day?
So the schedule for, it's kind of switched for 8th grade and for 7th grade. But 8th graders, you have your core class in the morning and it's done at 10:08. And then you have like this other period where you have PE and Math enrichment. And if you don't do Math enrichment, then you just have a study hall then. And then you have the lunch blocks. And so a lot of the electives are basically worked into the lunch blocks. So Band and Choir are lunch blocks. And if you do both of them, then you alternate days. And then you can also do a foreign language lunch one, or you can do a foreign language lunch three. So like if you do a lot of electives, you don't get as many study halls. Like I only have one every other day, but you do, you have a lot more.
So kids who get a lot of electives will get generally a lot less study hall time. And then sometimes the study hall will be, like if you have Band and Choir, then sometimes the study hall will be there because you have a lesson during study hall.
In the acronym... Does anyone know what that means?
Can you give an example of dynamic behavior?
Well, dynamic behavior is like just always being optimistic and trying to like put your best foot forward even if like something's maybe not going the best. You can just try to be optimistic and saying, well, I can work through this and like I'll make it through. And all of these other things are going well. And also just like helping other students if you see them like also.
Okay.
And also like staying organized and keeping in charge of everything, yeah.
Jason?
Can you tell us more about why you want the 6th grade students here?
Um, we feel like, I mean, when we were in 6th grade, we feel like that at the end of like, it was the middle and the end, you feel like you kind of are, like you have more independence in middle school. So you feel like in 6th grade, you feel like you could have that independence. That's at least how I felt. And so I feel like a lot of kids that are at 6th grade with, we're kind of ready for the independence that we have here in middle school, so.
It would be great to just have that independence sooner and stir. A lot of kids, we definitely were not fully engaged in 6th grade because they felt that they weren't getting the best experience that they could have. And so I think that Mums could provide that for 6th graders.
On the timing thing, the more time between classes and more time for some of other things that's not the point, would you be willing to stay at school longer to have those things?
Good question.
I feel like if you added like two minutes to like maybe a time between like 4 classes, because like the 4 classes are 8 minutes, maybe like one of the, like a few of the 4 classes could like spare about two minutes more. More social time you have, kind of feel like the day goes by faster. Because I feel like in elementary school, you like, you don't really have that much social time. So you're always like, you feel like the day goes on, like really long, but in middle school, it doesn't feel that long because you have like, I feel like you have more social time than you do like, or anything.
I'm curious if you guys have noticed any changes with the implementation of international baccalaureate curriculum? And if you have, have they been positive?
I feel like there's been some changes. There's like, but they seem to be subtle, just like different rubrics for our work and stuff. And they don't seem like they're always been doing. And I think they've been positive. It doesn't seem like a super huge change yet, so. Yeah, like from what we have right now, I know we're starting like a math unit that's supposedly an IB unit, but like they haven't really talked about the different changes that we're making. So like, I think that they might be coming, but we're just, we haven't really noticed much yet.
With activities, I saw on your presentation, you talked about more people being motivated to participate in activities. And I'm kind of interested to hear what's behind your theory that people need to be more motivated? Or is it, is part of it be that there may be students that might not be able to access activities due to transportation or other concerns?
Yeah, I feel like it could be both. But I feel like sometimes my friends are like, like they just don't really seem to like seem, they don't really seem to be super motivated about like pride challenges or other things. And I think we could work on that a bit. Yeah, it's like some of the activities that we're talking about happen during the day. Where they're like ongoing, like fundraisers, or the food drive. Like we just want to try to think of more ways to encourage students to do that. And also with pride slips, which are little cards that you can fill out if you see somebody exhibiting pride. And just then like they can be recognized by the Pride Panel. That's one of the things we do is we look at the pride slips. Like I feel like mainly the pride slips are being submitted by only teachers right now, so we're trying to get more kids to do them, too.
Or like some 7th graders, I know that we don't get like this information. It's kind of assumed that we do know. But so some things, like I came to Pride Panel and then they were talking about some things, and I was like, wait, what's that? Like I never heard about that. Like they never talked to us about that.
So maybe communicating what's going on as much as motivating.
Yeah. Great, thank you.
Have a question here?
I had a question, yeah. First of all, great presentation, thank you so much. So you mentioned homework and the homework log. What are your thoughts in terms of a recommendation about changes to current policy?
I feel like some teachers, like they'll give a reasonable amount of homework, and they'll understand that you have other classes with homework. But then sometimes other classes are very inconsistent. You might have like a very, very small amount of homework one night and then like a bunch the next. And so like it's very inconsistent. And sometimes like you have a ton of homework one night and then the next you have nothing. So like, I think we want it to be a little bit more consistent. Yeah, and to go along with that also, that's definitely true. And also like through inter-team grading, like I know that like with the 8th grade teams, there have definitely been some times where like we're learning the same things in the subjects, but the scores that we're getting are different. Like when you talk to people on other teams. And it's just like, and they don't really provide a reason for like why they're different. And I think it might be just like the teachers grade differently, but it would be nice to kind of have that unified so that like it's a standard across the whole grade. And even within teams, sometimes like the teachers will give different grades for like the same level of work. So it's a little bit confusing sometimes.
Mary?
I guess I'd like to piggyback on Peter's question about the homework. Is the homework relevant to you? Is it helping you, you know, be better informed or to advance your schooling? Do you feel like, or is it just busy work?
Sometimes it really does like help us advance, but then other times, it's kind of like pointless. Like sometimes you feel like it's kind of pointless, like repetition, like you've been spending like a month on the same thing, and then you're doing it for homework every day. So it's, sometimes it feels as if it's really helpful, and then sometimes it feels as if it's boring.
Do you have a chance to give feedback to your teachers on things like that? Or do you just sort of like...
A little bit sometimes, but like not that much. And I feel like that's another thing we could work on more, is like communication within like teachers and teams and things.
What do you feel like the school climate is here? Do you feel like students are, is there a lot of bullying? Or is there, do people get along and support each other? Are people being allies to each other? Or do you see some bad behavior among peers?
Like it's very good. Like there is very little bullying there. And like it, like everyone does a really good job showing pride and like supporting each other, I think. Yeah, like when I was in 6th grade and Mums came to our school just to talk about like what the transition was, they talked about student court and all of these things. Like, oh, if a student gets a write-up, they go to student court. And I was like, well, that's a very complicated system. But then I've never encountered like, I've never lived in a court case in like all the time that I've been here. So I don't know if that means that they're not happening at all, or, but I think that there are definitely not as many write-ups. Like there are really not that many.
Well, thank you all very much. Really appreciate it. Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, from anybody who wants to say, what do you think is the most important thing you want people to know about Mums? That could be a good thing, or something that needs improvement, or just something you want to highlight. And whatever comes to your mind is the thing that's most important to you to express to the public and us.
I feel like the community is really great because when in other schools before where the community isn't that supportive, I feel like this community here is really awesome how all the, especially in your team, they support each other and you really get to know other students.
And like what we were talking about, the climate, it's really great. And it's one of the best things where everyone supports each other.
Thanks. Thank you all very much. Chris?
Last question.
Sure.
Is there a running tally on score for the Pride Cup?
I'm not sure. I don't think so yet. We've completed one challenge, but we're like, we've started the next one, but... Oh, there will be a run in school.
And next week's recognition assembly, the team that won first challenge, which was what? The what? The magazine drive, raising money for charity. That winner will be announced next Friday. And what is our pride challenge right now?
Food drive.
Four. Where is it going?
Hope.
And so last year, we raised over 4,000 pounds of food, which is a lot of food. And that is our goal again this year. And so the team that brings in the most food will win that round of the challenge. Thank you, guys.
All right. Thank you. You are welcome to stick around for our discussion of the quarterly financial report.
It'll be riveting.
Drive you to, want to be on the school?
Oh, God.
Nobody stayed.
No.
So surprised.
They have to do their homework.
You're right. Good point.
Cleared out.
Great question. The question was just asked, how would students pick to do the presentation? Students weren't picked, students volunteered. I went to the Pride Panel and said... I went to the pride panel and said, I'm looking for people that would like to present to the school board and they raced to sign up. Of the thirteen members on the pride panel, nine were here tonight. Um, and they wanted to do it and they, they planned their presentation, including their concerns and the adults, we let them run the show in it so they could express what they believed about their school.
And when they're coming into school, how do, how do you assign them to a team?
Um, we assign them to a team through a, a long process of, um, we get input from the sixth grade teachers about whether students should be on a team together or not. So if you look at say, um, for me, when I came from Salisbury, maybe there would have been a group, two groups out of that list. We then, we then worked to balance the teams based upon gender, um, sort of levels of need in terms of behavioral and educational need and excellence. And then we put all that together and we go back to the sixth grade teachers and to the grade school counselors and say, do these look like good matches? And it goes through about six rounds before we finally come out with team lists.
And just to follow up to that, if a student comes in, in eighth grade, new to the school, that's done in a similar way or?
Yes, yes. We look at past educational records. We then look at where our teams are on a given day. We at one point last year, one team had six students more than the others. So we look to see if that student would be a good match on the team with the lower numbers. But we still go through the same process of looking at academic data, behavioral data, things like that to see where we feel a student would fit the best.
All right. Quarterly financials. Okay. Hand it over to Josh.
All right. Um, so I sent out the quarterly financial report and the finance committee just spent actually quite a bit of time looking at it and commenting on this form. And there's actually a number of different levels that I've created. Uh, and I believe we decided that we would be issuing a second level and I will get into what that will look like in a minute. So I wanted to first just go through, uh, the new summary form and where that came from and some tweaks that we will make on it. Uh, it's also what I'm calling level one. So this is the form that you got. It's the table. It looks identical to the, or very similar to the same form that we had in our budget book last year. So that was kind of the idea is that if somebody, uh, wants to compare that to our, our financial summary, they can go, those numbers match and line up. What I'll be adding to this new financial summary report is an actual year-to-date column just for some more information. Um, and every quarterly report will come also with a narrative. So, um, as I said in the narrative, at this time of the year, uh, through the first quarter, we're pretty much going to project, uh, that we will spend everything that we budgeted for at this time last year and that we will receive everything that we budgeted and expected to receive in revenue, with the exception of items that we know for certain are going to come in differently, um, just because it's so early in the year. Uh, so I'll just talk through those briefly. The first piece under local, that delta is tuition. Uh, we expect more tuition this year, but we know we are because we have more tuition students. Uh, Rochester High School closed, I think in August this past year and a number of those kids selected to come here. Uh, so we expect to have at least a hundred thousand dollars more in revenue from other districts. That's a good thing.
Is that entire line of, that's called local? Is that all tuition or is that other revenues as well?
That's other local, uh, funding as well. Uh, the tuition line in our budget last year was, uh, it was like five hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. So we expect about six forty-nine this year. State revenue, so that decrease in expected revenue is due to the state healthcare clawback of three hundred and nine thousand dollars for this year. And then next year, that number will be a hundred and sixty-six or something along those lines. Um, so that's just money that the state is not going to give us. Instead of giving us thirty million, four twenty-eight, they're gonna give us thirty million, one hundred and nineteen. Uh, student instruction, uh, the only adjustment I had here was for, at, at Mary Hogan, uh, we had students move in that needed more, uh, student support, um, via CSAC contracts is how that support was provided. They are not special ed eligible, so these are regular ed costs. Uh, we had budgeted around seventy thousand of that based on the population that we had last year. Um, and with these new students that moved in, that has exceeded that amount, um, and the effects are in the seventy thousand dollar range. Transportation.
I have a quick question with that. Um, if, if that is required because of students from out of district, do we, can we bill back for any of that?
Um, if it's special ed.
But you said these were not special ed.
These are not special ed. These are kids that moved into our district from, these are just people who moved in our town.
Yeah. But what I was wondering about is specifically about tuition kids, if you have to put on extra services for non-special ed, it sounds like you can't bill back for that.
No. Uh, next piece is transportation. Um, so the, we provide a bus from Hancock and Granville that picks up all those students that come to our schools. That cost of that bus is actually not in our contract with our busing company. It's a separate invoice that they send us and unfortunately they don't send us that invoice until January. And so last year at this time, when I was doing the budget, I had no idea that cost was even there. So unfortunately I missed that one. I apologize. That one won't happen again. Um, and so the last piece is under contingency, uh, but this one's a little bit confusing because I, I would have projected, so we had contingency in our budget of three hundred and ten thousand dollars that we all talked about last year. Um, and if we hadn't had an issue, I would have been projecting that three hundred and ten thousand dollars as a surplus. I'm not only projecting two seventy-four. Um, and that is due to an issue with the town of Ripton, uh, school payments. So the way our payments work is in September, the state issues, um, a report that says this is your state education funding and here's your payments and this is what you're gonna get. And they do it for every district. Uh, and so that's what we base all of our revenue information off of. In the spring, in March, they do a reconciliation and they say, here's what you actually received. And then they calculate either the town owes you money or you owe the money town. Or, or you owe money to the town. Yes, that's it. Um, so when we got our reconciliation in March, the Ripton payments did not match our books. And so we had multiple conversations at the state level and I had another couple of conversations at the state level and they swore to us up and down that they were right. It was a grand list change and no, you do not in fact owe the town thirty-five, thirty-five thousand dollars. That's that. And so at that point I said, okay, fine, I'm tired of arguing with you. Um, the auditor for the town of Ripton contacted us about three weeks ago with the same findings that we had in the spring. And so we sent them off to the state and the state contacted us about a week ago and said, the auditor's right, you owe the town money. So unfortunately, I guess I should have been more stubborn in my refusals, but, uh, so that one I have coming out of contingency. Um, so moving forward, um, we just finished our time studies for special education and so we budget last year at this time, based on the student population that we have, how much of an FTE is going to be special ed eligible, how much is going to be regular ed eligible. Then we do time studies in October and those time studies, then we have to adjust and reconcile what they're actually doing for what we budgeted. Uh, and so we have that information now, so we will update our books. Uh, we then do another time study in February and then we have to update again. But this at least gives us an idea and we'll be doing that work moving forward to say, okay, here's the first time studies, here's the first, uh, the best information we have now, how does that affect our budget? Uh, and so we'll be working on that. And then once we finish that, we can reconcile all of our payroll expenditure lines. Um, so right now, if you were to get to the real nitty gritty level of detail, you would see that some spots have surpluses in the payroll line, some have some deficits in the healthcare expenditure lines. And so we'll go through there and make sure that, and shake all those out and figure out why is there a surplus or a deficit? And should that, can we move money from a surplus into deficit to cover that? And then that will give us an overall number of, okay, from the payroll benefit lines, here's this surplus. Cause we have had some positions that were not filled this year, so we're expecting a surplus there. Um, and then finally, the tentative agreement that was reached with support staff that we'll be discussing later, allows us to finalize all that variable that was out there. So, um, there's more to come. Uh, the second level of detail, which I will be sending to you probably in the next couple of weeks, um, is going to be very similar as far as the information goes in our budget book last year. That was broken up by school level. I know you can't see this, but we did a school level budget and we had it by function code. So it had classroom instruction, PK programs, special ed support, guidance, health media, so on and so forth. And so we're gonna give you a level of detail that shows that as well, which is just a little bit more information that'll also have, will have a central office, a facilities, a technology in those, that level of detail also. Um, I have another two layers of detail, if you're so inclined, happy to share this with you. Uh, but that's the, the gist of it right now. Any questions?
Jason, question.
Can you explain the time studies for me? I mean, I've heard this term before, but what does it mean?
So it's actually, well, can you explain that? You're much better.
So, um, for special education purposes, for all special education staff, whether it's special educators, speech language pathologists, paraprofessionals, super members providing services required by IEPs, we need to, based on state law, we need to get their schedules from them two times during the school year. And what we do is we take a look at those schedules and they, they start at the contracted day and they end and they tell us exactly what they do with who every single day for that one week shot in time. And basically then what we do is we analyze those to determine what is eligible time for reimbursement under the special ed funding formula and what is not eligible special education time. So for some, it varies. Some, some people we get seventy-five percent eligible, other people we get a hundred percent eligible and some people we get twenty percent eligible. So it helps us determine the FTE of eligible special education staff and we do it in October and then again in February.
And then you have to report that or you have to kind of delineate up within your budget so it goes into the right category?
Yep.
And we also report it to the state as well.
And report it, okay.
My, my question actually really piggybacks on that. And that is that in, in so much of the discussion around school funding right now, um, I have felt like there's a, a critical piece of the conversation missing around the notion of sort of schools demanding more and more resources to do less and less. And that is that I think, and I hear from parents and from teachers that they're asking to do a lot more and that much of this comes in the sort of form of what is essentially in some cases, delivery of human services in the educational, within the educational context. And I'm wondering if you feel like you're, like you're able to capture those, what those costs really are within the budget model that we have now? Or are there ways that we can flag those costs more clearly so that when we're having conversations, both with constituents and sort of statewide policy level, that we can point to what it means to ask schools to do, um, what in some cases, human services agencies and budgets have, have covered in the past?
I think that there's a portion that we can easily identify and a lot of those are just CSAC contracts. We have hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of contracts with CSAC every, every year. So that's very simple, but then where it gets complicated is we have some BIs and consultants that we actually employ. And so then it's, I think, drawing that line of what should a school have or what shouldn't a school have? And, and that probably is a little more gray. But definitely in some cases we can, there's the obvious costs that we can associate to it. Can you probably speak more to that?
Yeah, no, I would agree. I would agree. And then, and then it's, you know, what is the role of the school counselor? What is the role of, of guidance? There's a number of different, of different things that I think fall into that. I think on a, um, kind of a qualitative level, we could, we could pull those pieces out. I'm not sure that we could quantify it at this point in terms of how it impacts specifically on the budget. Um, I think we have that, the kind of that qualitative sense of how it does.
I mean, I know that for me, um, you know, when I have conversations with folks about, you know, schools and costs and budget and one of my tax dollars going to, and it's like, how, you know, how can it cost more every year to teach the same math and science and, you know? And, and it would be, that's not what we're doing. Many of those dollars are not just going to those things and that those, those increased demands on our schools carry costs. And I'd like to be able to talk about those as a board member, as somebody who's voting on a budget, um, when it's time to talk about what it means to run this kind of a, kind of a community service.
I think sometimes it's, it's not necessarily budget lines, but it's student outcomes that we really need to be focusing on and looking at. And I think that's where you see a lot of the impact of not enough services, um, not strong enough coordination with all of our other partners in Addison County and just the increasing level of need that, like you were mentioning, we hear about both in Vermont and we hear about nationally too, that the role of the teacher now and the role of a school system has changed dramatically over the last 20 years. Where we are, you know, health and human services and education, we're, we're really, because you can't separate the two.
Yeah, and I, I get that, but unfortunately student outcomes, even to the extent that we want to direct the conversations there, they don't go there when it comes time to pay a tax bill. And that's not where, what, you know, Digger or the Free Press or CAX are necessarily gonna write about. They're gonna write about the dollars in a sense and that's what, that's where the policy is being driven in one place or two. So I, I mean, I think it's important for us to really get a handle as a district on what we're spending money on from that perspective, right? Like where, you know, if we're being asked to level fund or we're being asked to bring our costs down, then, you know, we need to be able to be clear about what we're spending our money on. At least that's.
Peter? I just wanted to piggyback on what you were saying and just, um, tell you a little bit about what the budget and finance committee was talking about today as we are looking at this sort of preliminary budget process that Josh and Peter were presenting to us. In having this conversation about this sort of looking at it from a ratio perspective and making sure that we are also applying on top of that, the, the concept or the reality that some students are more expensive to educate because of the services that they need or because of the situation that they are in, um, uh, whether they're, you know, need special education services or ESL services or other services or just because they're coming from a background that is, is, is less supportive and less able to come to school ready to learn. Um, so we're trying even at the preliminary phase of budgeting to make sure we're taking that into account.
That's great.
I have another question. Regarding the CSAC cost, is any of that reimbursable through the Department of Mental Health?
No.
So it's all under school?
There's Medicaid.
So there's, right, there's Medicaid reimbursement. So for, for students, if we have a student who's on an IEP, there is a portion of that that's reimbursable. For, um, students who aren't eligible for special education, then we get, um, because of a Medicaid match that the counseling service has, we pay less for those services because the Medicaid match kicks in.
And this, and that implies that all the students have Medicaid? Or are they private?
That, yes, that implies that if it's, if it's a non-Medicaid student, the, the cost will go up.
And it's absorbed by the school?
Mm-hmm.
Right. You can't go to their insurance company?
No, not for these services, no.
I, I think part of this equation too, when we look at the budget, it's not just CSAC and, and the obvious places, but it's also staffing too.
Sure.
And making sure that there's enough staffing in each building because of increased need. We need to have, you know, differentiation in a large classroom, sometimes is really challenging and we need to have people working in smaller groups and, and providing support in that way.
And those are the kinds of costs that are harder to pin down, but that I think we really need to think about. I mean, the time study idea, I think is really, you know, obviously those are things that you have to do, but to, you know, to what extent can we expand those kinds of practices to really be able to, to include that information in the conversation where it hasn't necessarily always been before? Because other policy decisions in other areas are having an impact on our school budgets. And unless we can talk about how, we're, we're not gonna be very effective at moving the needle on that.
I agree.
Steve?
I, I feel like I have to say that last board meeting, this board voted to empower the VSBA to go out with a rather ham-fisted, um, ratio, uh, charge to pass a law that says we have to increase the ratios from four to one to five to one. We're talking about decreasing staff and this board voted for that and now we're talking about the opposite of that. We can't provide those services without those people. Um, but we're saying that to cut the cost. But we're saying that to cut the costs, we have to cut the ratios. You can't provide the services without the people. I know, we talked about money, but we talk about services, but we're, we're saying we want both. And what we passed last month was not both. It was saying, cut the money and tie retirement incentives to that ratio. So I just feel it's incumbent to point out that this board last month voted a very large majority to pass that resolution.
To be clear, I wasn't calling for an increase in, in staffing to meet those needs. What I was specifically asking for was an accounting of those needs so that we can intelligently talk about what it means to fund all of those services. It may be that when we look at that, we say that has an impact on our ratio conversation. I don't know. But without that information, I don't feel like we could have a fully intelligent conversation about what we're funding and why.
Chris?
I think it's a really interesting thing to try to do. I think from, I'm trying to think it through. My first question is, what, what norm would we be sort of comparing it to? Like, what's the, if, if we're looking at trying to quantify a cost of, of what some of us might see as like a change in society from what we knew schools to be to what they've evolved into now? I'm just curious. I'm trying to figure out what the norm is going to be to have a quantitative analysis done. I mean, I, I think I understand, I understand where you're driving at. I think it could be useful. I'm just, it seems like a very-
I'll take it as a rhetorical question.
Yeah, yeah. It seems like a difficult.
Well, yes, Mary?
My thought on that is, I know in, in hospitals, we look at acuity. How much extra care does the patient need versus somebody who's in for kind of a routine admission? So it increases staffing when the person's in ICU or they're in, you know, just coming out of surgery or whatever. And I often think of school, because I've worked in schools in the special services. The acuity is, some students are going to be requiring much more time than, than another student. So I think when you look at staffing, I think if you could just think about how much extra time this student might require, it's a way to quantify it in some way. But I think the time study might be one way to look at that.
Mary, that's a, that's a good analogy. However, the acuity part in hospitals, they have a code that they attach, and then that goes to the insurance company or somebody else, and they pay it. We don't have that particular-
We don't have that. No, but-
And that's, and that's really what he's talking about.
Exactly.
Is we don't have a way to, you know, quantify that difference in acuity and come up with a number somehow that we can explain to the public that this is, or to ourselves, what this means.
Yeah.
So that, Chris's point too, is how do we?
Yeah.
And I think we'd want to be careful about labeling students with, you know, with tax. But I, I mean, the federal government has set it with title funding at, you know, at a pre-reduced lunch status. So, you know, we, we do have title schools who receive additional funding based on, on poverty. You know, and that percentage is 35%. So, I mean, that's one way that it's measured currently in our systems, and, and funding follows that as well.
Ruth?
And what we were talking about in our, in the Finance Committee is that being careful that we're not always just looking at straight enrollment, that we're looking at equalized pupil, because the equalization of pupils in our formula adds a certain percentage on to students who require additional services because they're either secondary students who are more expensive to, to educate than primary students, or students in poverty, or ESL students, or special education students. And I believe the legislature actually asked for an additional study on top of, to see if those percentages and ratios were actually effective and working still. And the AOE is not doing that study for various reasons. So, anyway, I think that there's, there's an attempt at, within our formula, to take into consideration those things. Whether it's wholly effective, we don't know, and we, we do need more information. And unfortunately, it sounds like that information is not going to be forthcoming from the state anytime soon.
Vicki, you mentioned that some special educators might be working 20% at a reimbursable service. What would be a special educator do, what would a special educator be doing that isn't a reimbursable?
So, so in order to be, in order to be eligible under the reimbursement formula, the priority is working with students on IEPs. And so, so we have a funky funding formula in Vermont where if a special educator, they are allowed to utilize up to 20% of their special education time to support students with 504, who are eligible under 504 and EST. But that 20% time hardly ever really manages to be 20% time. So if a special educator is only, is, let's say, is working 50% of their time with IEP students alone, then an extra 10% of their time could be utilized to work with EST and 504 students. So basically, any time that they're working with regular ed students, any time that there's a small group, and the small group is predominantly made up of students with EST plans or 504 plans, that's not eligible time. So it really, if, if they're doing a, you know, just going into a classroom, isn't, isn't eligible time. So it really, it varies, and we have a clear listing of things that are eligible and are not. But it really, what we try to do is we want to get a clear and clean schedule and not give us a schedule that shows 100% eligible time. We want a clean and clear schedule, and we, we figure it out on the back end in terms of which budget it needs to fall into. Because we want them supporting kids. We don't want them trying to figure out the eligibility piece, so.
Thank you. Any further questions for Josh on the quarterly financial report? I think it was very clear and concise. Appreciate it. All right, moving along, we have a conversation about member-to-member agreements. And I think for the benefit of those who have not been part of these performed, whoever's presenting, you were Bill, a little background as to what they are and how they play a role in our schools.
And I did want to add that we did get further information on Friday and would like to actually ask the board to take action on this as opposed to just discussion.
Is there a timing issue here that's very important? And I, and I say that only because there have been a number of parents who have expressed a desire to be part of this conversation when action was going to be taken.
Could redo it.
Would you like me to address the issue?
Yeah.
Yeah. So last, I'm, on the, the VPA basically has, has three standing committees. It has an executive board, which oversees all of the VPA initiatives. It has a professional development board, which works at developing, professional development for all the principals across the state. And it has a third committee, the Activities Standards Committee, which oversees all of the activities and athletics at the high school and middle school level in the state of Vermont. For the past, I've been on that committee for the past 18 or so years. I've been chair of it for most of that time. I walked away from the chair last spring because I was facing some significant surgery last summer, and I thought my tenure was coming to an end as a high school principal. Some of that has changed recently, so I have maintained membership in the committee. And the member-to-member, which is a policy, the member-to-member program is a policy of the VPA that is managed by the Activities Standards Committee. And initially, it was put in for two purposes. The first purpose to help schools that had existing teams that were struggling due to enrollment to allow other high schools who didn't have teams that have their students participate in a particular team in order to save that program. A secondary reason for the, for the motivation to adopt that policy was to basically enhance student participation across the state. At some point last summer, for reasons I really don't understand, the committee and the VPA decided to back away from the second reasoning of the program, which is to enhance participation, and was adhering to a very strict, and had voiced a policy change to enact a very strict policy of only supporting member-to-member if a school was facing the loss of a team. We had a meeting this past Friday, and that decision was reversed. So now, for the remainder of this school year, the VPA will be allowing member-to-member agreements to develop for both, for either of those reasons or both of those reasons. So we can continue the practice of member-to-member that we've done. The situation here in Middlebury is that we have two other county high schools that do not have, in this case, ice hockey programs. Yet those students grow up skating for an organization called Mahah Middlebury-
Area Hockey Association.
Middlebury Area Hockey Association. And those kids play with Middlebury kids and grow up playing with them. But when it comes to coming to high school, under the strict interpretation of that rule, they wouldn't have been able to continue. However, we, we changed that this past Friday. And so my recommendation to the board was that you allow the high school to enter into an individual agreement with Virgin Junior High School and with Mount Abe for the purpose of boys' ice hockey. And we've been doing that in the past. There's, we have agreements with them. Their boards have, have supported those agreements, and they do compensate us so that they share in the cost of the program.
Bill, can you share about the numbers? Do you know anything about numbers?
Well, we probably have 16 students. We could support, Middlebury could support an ice hockey team. We have 16, which is low, but it's, we could, we could have a team with 16. However, we could have, the upper number is, I think, 24. And so we have plenty of room to host these kids. And we have, I believe, three students from Virgin's who would like to play ice hockey, and one student from Mount Abe who would like to play ice hockey. So adding those four students to us, we're still under the maximum limit of students that we're allowed to carry on the bench.
And in terms of, I'm sorry, Jeff?
No, go ahead.
In terms of a deadline to, for the board to act?
I suppose that VPA would like to have these agreements settled 60 days prior to the start of the season. So we're, we're starting to close in on the season. That's why it would be helpful if we got the authority to go ahead and now.
Question is, Mary?
Yeah, is it only ice hockey for men's, ice hockey? Could it be any other?
That's all we're looking at for this-
For now?
For the winter season. We have had these, we have these agreements and have had the agreements with other sports during other seasons.
Okay. So it is an option if, if it presents? Okay.
And, and part of the decision last Friday was that the, 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 the VPA is going to look at what the needs are across the state and work with the athletic directors who very much support the member-to-member agreement. One of the interesting things is the difference between medium and large schools such as ourselves versus very small schools. And whether or not small schools have neighbors that are willing to, as we have been, to accept students in, and that's sort of a problem.
Could you just define the difference between what you've just talked about, or is it the same? And what like Polkney and MSJ did with football, and they're called a joint team? Just define the difference.
So there is also another VPA policy called, a program option called a combined team. So, so several schools could and do combine and, and make a cooperative team. And they, there's a long list of rules that, from the VPA in terms of what have, they have to agree on calling it a sort of an independent name or be to call it the name of one of the schools they have to share in cost.
That's quite different than what we're talking about.
It's different. It would have been frankly, it would have been a workaround for us if the VPA hadn't changed the policy on member-to-member. We could have developed a cooperative program with these two schools in terms of ice hockey. But we don't need to do that.
Ruth?
I'm unclear as to whether we are voting on this or not voting on this tonight. Did you make the decision?
I was not making a decision and wanted to hear what we were, where we were at.
Okay. Because I'm, well, first of all, there's not a similar need or situation with girls' hockey? It's just boys? Okay. And what is the financial arrangement?
The reason for the not is that we don't have, we don't have young women from the other two schools that want to-
Want to play hockey? And what is the financial arrangement?
That each of the, for each student from one of the two schools, they pay $1,000 per student.
Per student? And is that based on actual cost?
Based on, it's based on our, the cost of the program. So we take the total number of participants in the boys' ice hockey and divide it by-
And just to the point of whether or not we're voting tonight, you mentioned that there were some parents who wanted to weigh in on this?
In support, so.
In support of doing the member-to-member?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there an argument not to do it? I mean, I know that this has been controversial in the past.
So let me, so the first, first part of that question is, all of those parents actually showed up at our meeting, and the meeting was held in the MUHS library last Friday, and they all showed up. We had actually a variety of students and parents from Middlebury as well as from- And your, the second part of your question was-
I, I have never served on a board that's had to deal with this, but I do recall, I think, being at a UD3 meeting where this was discussed, and it was not exactly clear cut, and there was some opposition. And I'm just curious, what are the arguments against?
Some people might argue that it's going to reduce playing time if you have 16 students are eligible to state, and now you add 20, you have 20 students that they're, some students might have less playing time. But at the varsity level, the philosophy at the varsity level is to be as competitive as possible. So it's even possible that on a 16-student team, there are going to be some individuals that don't get a lot of space.
And if this is just for varsity, not JV?
This is just for varsity.
Oh, okay.
The, the other argument that was a concern to my colleagues from smaller schools, and by smaller schools, I mean schools that graduate 20 students in a year, that what they've encountered in some other parts of the state where they have neighbors, larger schools that have a program that might be able to have room on their teams for some of those students from small schools, they can't possibly flow to hockey team, that those, that those communities don't want to do that because of various, you know, reasons or concerns that they have, that usually have to do with expense. And so they were sort of, they were, those small school principals were concerned about equity in terms of, from their point of view.
All right.
I guess my first question would be, since it's as a discussion item on our agenda, can we actually make it an action item? I don't believe we can do that.
I, I guess, having attended the Secretary of State's tour last week about the open meeting law and open meeting work, it was highly discouraged.
I don't think it's illegal. I mean, historically, historically, let me qualify that. Historically, we, we made a change, or I think it was two years ago, we made a change to put discussion and action on our agendas. Prior to that, we never stated action or discussion at all on agenda. We just put agenda items, and we discussed or acted as, as needed on those agenda items. But I do agree that there's a-
Because I went to the Secretary of State thing last year. That's one of the reasons I- That's one of the reasons I would hesitate to do that. And I also would just kind of state for the record, although if anybody's watched previous board meetings, I've been one of the board members who has had an issue or struggled with this particular item in the past. In the beginning, we were trying to save the team. We didn't have enough for a team. And it just seems like it's been perpetuated and the issue, I guess, I have more than anything is because it's a team that doesn't have other schools with the team, then you can have it. But if it's a team that has other schools with the same team, if you don't have enough people, then you're out of luck. Or if it's an individual sport where you don't have enough kids participating, then you don't run the team necessarily. So I, there's an equity thing involved for me and also just the fact that the initial reason for doing this just seems to be perpetuated when it was supposed to be a short-term thing to save the hockey team at that point.
I understand your, your point of view and your perspective. My personal point of view is that I think activities in general do a lot, you heard students speaking earlier about motivating students to do well and to participate in school. And for me, motivating students is to finding a niche for them that they really, that can latch on to and athletics do that. I would always fall on the side of arguing for more things. One of the things that our committee did last Friday, which is historic, is we voted to sanction, VPA is going to sanction, I shouldn't call it, Ultimate. And we're the first state in the nation to sanction Ultimate as a varsity sport. So for those of you that don't know what I'm talking about, Ultimate is, we'd call it ultimate frisbee, but I just infringed somebody's copyright.
You owe somebody money.
Ultimate flying disc.
Yes, that's it.
So to me, that's, that's going to open up participation in enormous ways because it serves a different group of students and the thing. So whether it's ice hockey, whether it's lacrosse, I think that in a state like this where we are primarily very small schools, the number of schools that are our size or bigger are, you can fit in two handfuls, two hands. And that's, we need to provide opportunities for students to be able to be engaged.
I would agree with that, but I don't think anybody can say that this high school does not offer a huge amount of activities for our kids to participate in. So, I mean.
Do we, do we help out? I mean, I, I made the argument that we could probably have, we should probably have one high school in.
All right, we're not getting too much.
So if the, what's the drop dead date in terms of, of this vote? The next board meeting is November 20th.
November 20th?
Yeah.
That might, that might work. The ice hockey season will start around Thanksgiving time.
I thought it would be 60 days before it started the season.
I mean, we're, the VPA will understand, I think, that can allow us.
Especially since you just reversed the rule that, yeah. It seems a little tight.
Generally, we're supposed to have these things squared away 60 days.
All right. All right. Well, it'll, it'll sort of change the order in which we do things at our next meeting, but I would, if nobody objects, I would say we put this off until our, our next meeting to have the vote. I will just say that this was in fact, as Lorraine said, originally started when our high school hockey teams were in a real valley of participation and it really did sort of help them over that. Bill has actually changed his position on this as he has seen it work well for our program. And this was controversial last year because the participation rate was much higher and they actually, I think, did a full roster of at least 24. And so I think some parents for that one were concerned that the member-to-member agreement was taking away ice time or competition time from their, from their kids. Frankly, I'm more comfortable with 20, knowing that illness generally brings that number down to about 16 anyway. So we will put that off until our, our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, as we move along here, discussion about students on school boards policy. And Perry?
So we had a lovely discussion, Chip and Mary and I, about a sweet proposal that Ruth had written about having student, student or students on our school board. And in our wisdom, we thought we should get more input from this gang before we honed a written proposal to bring to you, quote un. So very simply, we wanted to know whether we should go forward. Are there any issues, any problems after this presentation with the kids? It seems like no-brainer. But I'm sure Chip and Mary have comments as well.
Yeah, please go ahead, Chip.
Well, I thought it'd be helpful too, because I have some reservations relative to students on a board such as this, which is basically the students that we would have, and I'm not against the students being on them, but this is a different subject than students on the original UD3 board. Because in fact, they were dealing with UD3. We're now dealing with everything. And it, I, I'm not against it, but I really thought we needed to sort of flesh it out a little more as to what the role, how they get chosen, what issues they're going to be dealing with. And it just, so I, I guess, would feel more comfortable too, that that was worthwhile for this board, which is much more encompassing of all the age groups and just middle school and high school.
Mary, do you want to add something?
Yeah, I sent Peter and Peter and Perry, I believe, a list of research articles that I looked at regarding students on school boards. And pretty strongly endorsed by many people to include students around the area of civic engagement and giving them meaningful purpose in their school. So, I mean, I could share that with people, but it was, I could not find anything, any articles that found a reason not to do it. I think Chip's idea of where this is across the district, we do have to do a good job of figuring out what criteria we'd like from the students and how we would select them. Most of the school boards that do have students say they're non-voting members, which, you know, I guess we could talk about that. But I, everything I've read through a significant amount of research supported the idea.
But isn't it all, excuse me, but isn't it also that the student itself is not just to help them be civically engaged, all right?
Right, right, right.
It's to enhance the board's perspective by having students. That's what I would think.
Chip, one of the articles did talk about, you know, how to put together the best board. And it meant not only all members, community members, but it included students as being an important part of a school board.
Again, I'm not against it. I just need to solidify it in my mind.
Yeah, it's not just a one-way street just to enhance students. It will also enhance our work.
It was something that evolved on the UD3 board. We used to have students, they would come in and they would kind of read a report of what they were up to and then they'd leave. And then we sort of felt like it needed to be a more substantive role and kind of rewrote a policy for those students, you know, so they would, they would be there and be part of the conversation. I think the only limitations we put on them was they couldn't vote and they couldn't attend executive session. And it was, you know, it was great. They were, they, you know, when they were there, they were, they were students who were involved in a lot of activities, so often they missed meetings. But it offered a great amount of perspective and information for us. Yes.
So last year, this issue came up and after we had a presentation by the students who had been on the UD3 school board. And they talked about the experience that they had had as school board members or being, you know, members of the UD3 board and wanting to, you know, perpetuate it here on our ACSD board. And at that point, the board asked the policy committee to come up with a draft policy, which over the summer I did. And it was one of the policies that was assigned to me when I was on the policy committee. And so I actually met with, I talked to all the students who had, or several of the students who had been on the board before about how it worked and what they liked and what they didn't like. And then I talked to this two students who last year were elected to be the Student Senate co-chairs and asked them for input. And I talked to their advisor, Carrie Anne Sevry, who's a math teacher at the high school, and asked her for her input and drafted a policy, which I consent to all of you. I had asked that you guys all look at it or have a copy of it so you could see the language. But it does have students have, one of the things that I thought was important and the students thought was important was having sort of a feedback loop to make sure that when the students come to the school board, they have already talked to students about some of the issues we may be addressing, you know, budget issues or curricular issues or things that are relevant to students. But also then that they could then go back and talk to students about our discussions and what we've done so that there's, you know, not just two students talking about their own opinions without having, having any kind of engagement with other students. So that's where we tried to tie it a little bit to the Student Senate because the Student Senate has representatives from each of the high school grades. And have that, the students who are sitting on our board be required to report or, and go to Student Senate meetings, whether or not they're senators or, or not. So that's sort of the structure that we came up with. The students wouldn't have a vote. They wouldn't be in the executive sessions. They could serve on committees. Those were some things. And that there would be two and they would have to be from two different grades so that they wouldn't term out at the same time. And that the principal would recommend the students based on the recommendation of the Student Senate. So that's basically what it was. But I would agree with Mary in what you said. You read based on the work I've done, students who are on school boards are much more civically engaged as adults. They're much more likely to run for school board or other public office when they become adults. And the school board itself is able to be much more informed about student issues than we are as grownups who are not sitting in the classroom on a daily basis. And, and the perspective of the principals who come to our meetings or the superintendent are clearly going to be different than students. So I think it's a really valuable asset and I think they could add a lot to our meetings. And to the point of, you know, I hear what you're saying, Chip, now we're, you know, representing all the schools across K through 12. I guess I would, I would say that that's actually the model that most school boards are throughout the country that have school, that have students on them. And these students, for the most part, have come up through our system, so they will have attended different elementary schools, they will have gone to Mums and, you know, in, for the most part, and so they will have that broader perspective. And the good thing that they'll have is they'll have, they'll have that perspective of looking back of what it was like when they were an elementary school student, but also how they've grown to become that. So I'm strongly in favor of it. And if you want, I can forward you the draft right now, but I think that it would be a really, it would add a lot to our board, especially as we're talking about student issues.
Yes.
I think it'd be awesome to have students on the board. My only concern would, would be the students' time and the value that they may get from some of the topics and the time commitments of our school board and being mindful of that and homework demands on certain nights that they might be here for two to three hours. So just, and I appreciate that you've been so mindful of talking to students and talking to teachers and advisors already, and so you've probably already come up with this concern. I would just want somehow for it to be included in any documentation that obviously school comes first and for us to look carefully at our agendas, to, you know, maybe put things that could be of interest to students maybe earlier in the agenda so that then they could move on if they had homework or something like that.
We did actually talk about that and one of the things that we talked about is how do you make sure you get students who aren't, haven't already piled on eight million other activities, you know, the sort of high-achieving students who say yes to everything? And how those students are great to have on a board, but sometimes it's, it's nice to have a student who may not be overloaded. I think Peter's right in that the students won't attend every meeting. If they have a game or if they have an exam or something like that, they're not going to. But if you have two, hopefully at least one of them will attend. And that the students understand it's a commitment that they're getting into and what that commitment is and making sure, I think the policy also has a thing where there would be a mentor on the board too, so that one of us would be assigned to the student to help that student prioritize the meetings and the agenda items and prepare and ask questions and have sort of a buddy to go through the process with. So, yeah. And the other thing is that there used to be a committee, the Town School Committee, that was just a UD3 ID4 committee that met with the town of Middlebury officials. And the town of Middlebury officials actually came to us asking us to have, to recommend students to put on their committees. And we kind of said, we want to prioritize those students being on school boards first and then maybe if there's enough interest, maybe six students pop up and say, hey, I want to be on the school board. Maybe four of them could then, you know, two of them could be on the library committee or the rec committee or some of the town committees. But really making sure that we're focusing on school board first. So there is an interest broader, more broadly speaking, to get students engaged and feel part of our community and learn about what boards do in general across our towns.
Nick.
Yes, I thought on UD3, the two representatives we had from the student population really got us more engaged in what was happening at the school and they made a very positive impact. So I would be in favor.
Suzanne.
I loved, when we had the students coming, I would just, I currently sit on a committee where I work and they have two students on the committee and one student, it just, just sugar it out this way, one student happens to come from a very well-to-do family and another student that applied to be on the committee happens to be an ESL student. And the viewpoints between the two students as to how things are going on in school and what the school needs to support students is really quite strikingly different. And that might be something to think about as we think about criteria to have students on the board is to make sure we cover all of our bases and not just the high flyers that might be on the student council.
One thing, Perry, that I think was, is important is to make it a two-year position. It takes a while for these kids to kind of find their voice as it does many adults on a school board as they sort of learn the ropes.
Jason.
I'd actually encourage us to think possibly even bigger for some of the, some points for those reasons than just two students. And I know it can feel unwieldy, but a number of years ago, I did some contract development work for an organization in Essex that worked within the school district that focused very much on youth engagement. And that organization's board was split, half students and half adults. And they were very influential in that, in that school district. They did a lot of work with responding to substance issues and uterus behavior surveys and things like that. And what came out of that effort of having more students involved in the governance of that organization and then also through their connection with the school and actually influencing the work of the school board was pretty universally hailed as a, as really innovative and creative and coming up with solutions that worked really well across the community. So that it wasn't just that student voices were being heard, but that the things that they were coming up with were things that really connected with the community as a whole. And they saw community engagement really substantially impacted, and community engagement in the schools impacted by that as well. So I would even say, consider whether we, you know, provide more than even just two opportunities.
I just emailed you all the draft.
Thank you. I want to say, your students this evening from the middle school were so impressive. I'd almost like to see some of them as members at large, you know, just, they were so articulate and thoughtful. We cannot dismiss their, their input. So thank you for bringing them to us.
So to give a little guidance here to the policy committee, I'm not hearing any opposition other than Chip's strong opposition. opposition, other than Chip's strong opposition to this.
Yeah, right. No, I just thought it was a good thing to discuss because this is a new board. I was really in favor of the whole process. I just thought we needed as a board, some of these policies will bring something and then we can pick it apart. This one, it just seemed, we're through doing a lot of work to write it, that before we did that, we just needed a little more process.
Further comments? Further questions for the board from the Policy Committee?
I have another question. Since you did sort of a draft, maybe the Policy Committee needs to relook at that draft considering some of these other changes that have been discussed.
That's what we're going to do.
Okay. That's the purpose.
You're, you're on the Policy Committee, right?
Yes.
Great. Okay, we have number two here, committee updates, but we're kind of covering that. Seems we've got negotiations coming up to the end here. We've got, we discussed this at our last meeting as well and
They're still doing our homework.
And we got our homework and we, and, and then we will have committee meetings during our Monday session next time, as well as a quick bit of action on the member to member.
Is that, is that all we would talk about at the board meeting?
The, what we agreed on at the last meeting was that we would have committee work, then we would come together as time allowed to not, we won't, we will try our best not to put action items on so that it's generally considered a work session, but that that work session would be focused on board development and topics in that area.
What about like bills and stuff like that?
Are they necessary? We can certainly put them on there. Is it necessary twice a month?
No.
No.
Okay. But Finance Committee, I mean, we are in the throes of budget development.
Yes.
We may have to report some stuff to the board or
That's fine. I mean, you know, it's totally, and we certainly know that from now until end of January, we may be devoting that second meeting of the month to, because we've got budget items. Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, it's very flexible. Okay, more policy.
So we have a nice, very clear document, five pages long. I'm sure everyone's read it. It covers budget development, financial management, travel reimbursement, capitalization and disposal of assets, investments and borrowing.
Could you, could you provide a little background as to how you came up with all of the detail that's in this?
I got to send it right back to the committee.
Oh, right, this came from
Mostly it came from Ruth. He's drafted most of it.
I think Josh did, Josh did. But the finance, the policy started in the Finance Committee and we spent a couple of months on it actually, and Josh redid it a bunch of times based on our discussions and his conversations with other districts and some suggestions we got from our auditor. And while it's really very comprehensive, it will undoubtedly be a work in progress and we'll probably add and modify it as we go along. You know, just tonight, we met with the auditor actually and asked him about a reserve policy and whether or not that should be added. So that may be something we would add in the future. And because we're newly
Minted.
merged, whatever we are, minted, things are still a work in progress and there's a lot of, there are a lot of, there's just a lot of things to do still, so these may change. But I think that we spent quite a bit of time on them and they're pretty comprehensive and I would hope that everybody supports them. And thanks, Josh, for all the hard work on them.
Question. Oh, I've got a little more presentation here.
Yeah, so we, previous to this finance policy, we did not hold a finance policy anywhere. These are under the VSPA recommended policies. We started there in looking at the, the different recommended policies that the VSPA holds. We did, we do a lot of research to look at what, where other districts have gone in developing this and we found really far ranging policies from very detailed procedures to kind of visionary statements. So I think, I think this is a good in-between and I think, you know, we're going to have to wait and see how this works in terms of how we use this to, I think, reflect on, is it, is it at the right level and is it providing enough detail to both guide the artwork from the board and, and giving the board clarity, so.
I'd like to move that we adopt this policy.
Second.
All right, so time for further discussion, for further questions. Lorraine.
I had a question on the sentence, the board will, after public hearings and/or informational meetings, adopt a budget consideration by the district voters. Normally, I mean, are you talking about our general conversations at our board meetings where people can come to the, to discuss the budget as opposed to actually holding a bunch of separate public hearing meetings?
So we had a long discussion on the role of community engagement in the budget process and what ended up was that this language was the only thing that stayed in there about making sure that we had specific meetings where we discussed the budget prior, in a public forum and that can be in our meetings, or it could be a separately scheduled meeting where we are just presenting the budget to the public and taking Q and A and explaining things to the public, just leaving it open for the option of a separate meeting that would just be a budget meeting. That's generally what some towns do is they have a separate budget hearing prior to the board passing the budget and it just makes, it leaves open that opportunity to have an expanded sort of budget meeting.
In the investments section, it says the policy of the Addison Central School District to invest its endowments, trusts, scholarships and other special funds to maximize returns with socially responsible investments. Who defines socially responsible investments in this case?
It's defined in the policy down in the, the paragraph at the top of page five.
Okay.
Funds shall, investment managers are to direct, invest only stocks and equities which adhere to the limitations listed below. Managers shall not buy and shall not hold stocks or holding, who's our, for products who are not allowed on school premises, which includes the following: adult content providers, adult entertainment, adult movie producers, alcohol, child and sweatshop labor, firearms, gambling or tobacco and/or tobacco. And these are basically things that our policies prohibit on school property and prohibit from being done at school. And so this is actually adopted from the McJolton Fund policies that the ID4 Board adopted for its endowment and we just listed them here again because we felt like if those things are not allowed to be done or have at school, we shouldn't be investing in them either.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So if somebody said, you know, I'm, I'm against investing in fossil fuel companies because they're socially objectionable, this policy is written such a way that it's, it defines it more clearly than that.
Right, and if, if this board wanted to add fossil fuels or something like that to it, it, we could. It's not there now, we just took the language from the Jolton Fund, but certainly we could add other things to it.
Which is why the major investment is at the present time.
I, I, well, I mean, there are short-term investments, but that's the major, that's the only large endowment.
That's the only large one.
Yeah, that's the largest endowment.
All the little scholarships, a lot of them are privately held, right?
Most of those are privately held and separately invested outside of our
Who is the manager of the, who is the manager?
Of the McJolton Fund is, it's currently at People's United Bank and it's being invested by their, yeah. And we did an RFP a few years ago for that. Certainly this board could change that if they wanted to.
Although I don't think we could because isn't, didn't we leave the control of those scholarships to the originating entity?
No, it goes to the originating entity.
Okay.
But the board, this board oversees it. Yeah, yeah.
Lorraine.
I was, well, I'm not confused is the right word, but under the policy, financial management, I mean, I understand that it's the board's responsibility to see that funds are used to achieve, you know, intended purposes, but then it says the board seeks to achieve the following goals and it lists the four goals. And number three especially, provide timely and appropriate information and training to staff having fiscal responsibilities. I'm not quite sure what you mean by that. The board, I don't feel like that's something the board is supposed to be doing, right? That our administrators, I feel like the administrators are kind of like responsible for these things and we're making sure that
I read that as the board is responsible in the same way as the board is responsible for providing education to students in the district. It's sort of like ultimately our responsibility, but it doesn't mean that we're, like, I don't think, I don't think this anticipates us going and training the staff or something. It means through the superintendent.
Yeah, this sounded, sounded
I think it's in there because ultimately the board has fiduciary responsibility for the school district and so we want to make sure that the staff who are overseeing it are well-trained and, yeah. Is that how you read it, Josh?
Is it typical to have a, a finance policy that has sort of so many subsections as opposed to creating separate policies for each one? That's the only question.
We debated that and we went back and forth and it ended up as one policy, basically.
Pick a this or get a there.
Yeah.
You may see more of that.
Yeah.
Divide and conquer.
Any further questions or discussion? We have motion to adopt the finance policy as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? All right, excellent work.
Thanks to the people, that, that was a long one to have to put together.
Yep.
Good work, guys.
All right, on to something far less complicated, maybe.
Maybe.
Don't say that.
Food service, so food service contract renewal, so we have agreement with Abbey Group for Mary Hogan as well as former UD3, they're still under one contract. And this is a renewal, the state finally approved our application. The child attrition program is continuously turning over, so they are always very behind on getting anything turned around. So once they have to approve it and then, then we're allowed to execute the contract. So the contract can't change from year to year, that's all part of the renewal. If it were to change, we'd have to rebid it. This is the second of four allowable renewals. I am very happy with the Abbey Group as far as their performance goes. I have not heard many complaints from any of the principals or administrators that deal with them. They've been very helpful actually in our upcoming food service audit, which is happening next week, and really helping all of our rural schools that run food service in-house prepare for the audit, which I've been very appreciative of because they certainly do not have to do that. So I would just please recommend approval of their contract and happy to answer any questions.
I have a motion to approve it and a second and then we'll have discussion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Yes, having made the motion, I'll ask, are there, do we have options? Are there competent competitors? I'm just curious.
The last time it was bid, a couple, it was bid in 2015, two years ago before I came and there were two bidders, I think Cafe Services was one of them, who we used to have, I believe, at UD3 and I've just heard that people were not incredibly happy with them. So those are the two that I'm aware of.
Competition.
Yeah, there's very
Mary.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, actually, Steve had his hand up first.
Go ahead, guys.
Oh, I just, I have a question about management fee versus administrative fee. One's $5,000, one's $8,000. What's, what's the difference between the two?
Um.
Both, both Mary Hogan, I think, and
Yeah, they both have them. I think one is, I, I don't exactly know what the difference is, but that's what they're, that's what the bid was wrapped around for both back two years ago to say, please define your management fee and please define your administration fee and those don't change from year to year.
Steve. So I have two questions. The first one is, so are we approving the proposed budget or do we have to go through and add like proposed budget, management fees, administrative fees? Where, is there a bottom line that says how much this costs the district?
Yes, so for UD3, it's actually a return. There is no cost, so every, the money that they take in is actually more than what they spend and they guarantee that. And then at Mary Hogan, there is a subsidy limit, the contract for, our subsidy limit is $12,262, which is on that same page if you're looking at. And so at most, that would be our limit. Last year, there was no subsidy required at Mary Hogan. They finished in the black by seven or $8,000.
To, to our benefit or to Abbey Group's benefit?
To our benefit.
To our benefit, okay. And the second question is, you said there's no competition, has
Well, no, I said there's Cafe Services.
Well, there's Cafe Services. Has, has anyone ever done a study to look at bringing it back, doing it in-house rather than contracting the services?
We have not. It's out there on the list. It just hasn't risen to the level of priority quite yet. But that's definitely a conversation on which direction does, does the board wish to go? Status quo, which is, you know, the big schools have Abbey Group and the little, the rural schools continue to do it in-house, you know, all one way or the other. There's, you know, there's three different options that we really, we can look at. One of the benefits of unification was the ability to free up some of the finance teams. So Bill Waller on the finance staff is actually now taking over food service management where previously it was not really run by anybody. So he has actually been heavily involved in, especially preparing for this audit that we're having next week. So that's a task that he'll be given is, okay, let's start looking at what are the different options and then so we can bring something to you guys, hopefully sometime this year to say this is what, you know, either status quo or we could go entire food service or we could do it all in-house to expander the next steps.
Thank you. Victoria.
I know, you know, that now that we're unified, we may find this to not be, to be no longer true, but when we were looking at it at Mary Hogan, we looked at bringing it in-house and finding someone who could both deliver quality food and do the paperwork necessary, you almost would need someone who has an accounting department. And so as far as, when we were looking, you really needed, we felt that you really needed a bigger organization who could deal with, effectively at almost 50% free and reuse lunch and abiding by all the various rules and regulations, the size of the protein compared to this and that and all that.
The only reason I ask is I know that Northeast and Northwest have created an in-house group that they share.
Yeah, I mean, it would be interesting to see if now that we're bigger, it would make more sense, but at the time when we were looking for ID4, it didn't make more sense.
Yes, Ruth.
Yeah, I just wanted to second that. That's my recollection too, is that we did actually look at it for just Mary Hogan and we couldn't make it work. It was also much more expensive because somebody had to have the sort of startup fees to start doing that enterprise. But I just want to confirm that this is just an extension of the exact same contract we've had.
That's correct.
It's one of the auto renewals, it's not a brand-new contract.
Absolutely, just a renewal.
Yeah.
Of the exact same contract, yep. And I, and we've actually been contacting, Bill has been using Kathy Alexander who leads the
Yes.
The two, the, the new collaboration that they're calling it. So she's been very helpful. They, one of the training classes that I took in AUG is she was leading and they, their number was $200,000 that the two districts were contributing to their food service. And ours with our six-year-old schools is about 50. So it's a big, it's a much larger undertaking. So that, that'll be one of the things that we look into is to see how those figures work out.
Abbey Group, I think at least in their first year, lost money at the high school, at UD3?
They did.
How about the second year?
Second year, they made money. The middle school is their most difficult clientele and they're trying to figure that out.
We should have asked the middle schoolers about that because they actually, they have a lot of opinions about it.
Generally revolves around chocolate milk.
To clarify though, they did eat that loss, Chris.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Abbey Group ate that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the food service contract for 2017 to 18, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, we have All right, we have a food service contract. Other, I'll just mention that I went to the VSBA meeting, voted as directed by the board, all the resolutions passed, the votes were generally in the 60 to 70% in favor, and, you know, 30 and below against. There were probably about 30 people voting. It may sound like a small amount, each person represented one district, but because of unification, what were many people are now just one. So I think it represented 60% of the, of the school districts. And they, one thing that we did there was a test of using some electronic voting software, because they, the VSBA is really wanting to, well, their, their membership is saying, we want other ways to participate, rather than driving all the way over to Fairleigh. And so I think that it went well enough that they will try to implement that next year, so that all voting districts can have an opportunity to vote. The rest of the conference was mostly geared around various topics, a lot of time spent on community engagement with some really great speakers, it was very valuable, I'll share when we have our next committee meeting.
Great.
That's great. And as I said, I went to the Secretary of State's Road Show on open meeting law, glad to hear you went to it as well last year. And it was interesting, a lot of the stuff, you know, we're, we're pretty good on. And one of the concerns you kind of allayed was that if we all get together building a playground, or having breakfast, as long as we're not doing business, it's okay, contrary to popular belief that if you have a quorum, all of a sudden, everything is, you know, in place to make it an open, a meeting if it's all open meeting law. I was happy to hear that. Did you, Ruth, did you make it to the Public Assets Institute thing?
I did not.
Okay, curious. All right, how about a motion to go into exec? Oh, I'm sorry, yes, Suzanne?
So I, I received a phone call and an email message. For many years, the Bridgeport School Board was asked to do a community supper, which we paid for out of our own pockets, since it come from the school or anything, and we did it as a community service to the town. The organizers of the Bridgeport Community Suppers, which is, is 13th or 14th year, asked if I would bring their request to this board, to see if this board would like to participate and make one meal out of Bridgeport for the community. I told them I would bring it forward to the board, and that, you know, I would put it out there, and that sometime the board could discuss it, if they would like that. Our meal has been very simple. I mean, it's macaroni and cheese, sometimes we throw some ham in it, tossed salad.
Well, technically, there is still a Bridgeport School Board, too.
There is, of which I'm the chair. But they just asked me to bring it to this board, so.
Thank you. Actually, that may be ultimately a policy that we want to talk about. All right, motion to go into executive session under VSA Title I, Section 313, this is a contract negotiation conversation.
So moved.
Thank you. Seconds?
Second.
All those in favor going into executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining?
I will abstain, and I will recuse myself.
And before we go, can we get our photo before Steve goes?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.